I'm going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is Monday, May 20th at 6 o'clock. Let's start with the invocation. The invitation's been made to the Oskaloosa Gateway Church of the Nazarene. Not sure if they're here tonight. If not, would you pray with me? As we assemble here tonight, we thank you for the blessing of the people in the room. We've all felt your call to be part of the future of Oskaloosa and acknowledge the need for your guidance. For the council members and staff here, we ask Heavenly Father that you bless us. Give us quiet and considerate attitudes, well-thought-out deliberations, and ultimately, decisions that are best for the long-term future of the city of Oskaloosa. Heavenly Father, we thank you for those in the audience here and watching the broadcasts. We thank you for leaders of businesses and organizations who have the vision and commitment to help the city, the countless volunteers who are motivated to help, and for the informed citizens who have given us the privilege of their trust and support. So tonight, we have assembled a group of people who are making a difference in the long-term future of Oskaloosa, so may the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight. Amen.
Amen. Did you stand with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Here.
Fallery?
Here.
Joss?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Odison?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next item up is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. We do ask that statements be kept brief, time limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city's staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so that way concerns can be properly researched and then answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. In essence, what do you want us to know? Is there anyone who would care to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Christie Bridges.
Please go to the microphone.
Sure.
And name an address, please.
My name is Christie Bridges. I live at 1315 South First. I've been here before. The tile in the north alley of my property, which is owned by the city, divides the Weiss family and my family. I am lucky. I don't have any young children, but there's a lot of young children in that neighborhood. I have a sinkhole, and when Mr. Weiss called the city, the solution was to throw a couple cones out of the market. Well, I'm sorry, that is going to do it. This is a three-foot, and it's probably three and a half or four feet deep. This is still not fixed. I've been here before, but I think this is the fourth time in the 22 years that I've lived in that house. And all we want is for that to be tiled and be tiled correctly and not leave our yards in a mess like it was the last time. And the reason that I'm really here is, God forbid, if somebody has something happens to one of those children in that neighborhood, I've got a clear conscience because I tried to take care of it. So I do have a few photos here of the stuff. This is not from the big rain we just had in the last two days. This has been there for over two weeks. So this is something that has happened, you know, prior to the big rain. And it got worse after the rain because some of the tiling is just gone. It's just gone. So it was never fixed correctly in the first place.
Can we see the pictures, Christie?
Yes, ma'am.
Christie, is this the same issue as several years ago when you were here at the north end of your property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, it is.
Around the garage, right? Is that?
It's north of the garage.
Okay, could you go back to the microphone? Okay.
I have the actual corner of the lot. I have the lot the house sits on, a lot to the north and a lot to the west. Then the city has the alley that's between Will and Jordan Weiss, who live in that house with small children and animals and stuff. He did make a call, and then the other thing was told to him was, well, just go ahead and fix it. It's not our responsibility. It's your alley. It's not our alley, and no, I don't want to buy it.
Okay.
I'm just worried about the kids because there's, you know, I'm now the oldest one in that whole neighborhood, and the rest of them all have small children. I mean, you know, six, three, four-years-old, six, seven-years-old, riding bikes. They scabbied in there because, you know, it's a great place for the snakes and the frogs and all that stuff. So that's what really kind of worries me on the whole thing.
Okay.
And I really hope that this is the last time I have to come here because I don't really relish taking the time off of work to come here and spend the money for the photographs that I shouldn't really have to do.
I'm in on your lot. Which corner? Where's the location?
I'm actually on the corner of 13th and First, and it's-
And the sinkhole is where? Is that-
It's north.
Okay, so, thank you.
It's probably, I don't know, maybe four or five feet from the garage, which is always wet, you know, because it doesn't rain, right? I don't keep much in there because it's just not usable. The one that you have in the blue is where Will and Jordan Weiss live, and then that is my garage here on the left. And the sinkhole is about where that, I think it's a phone or fiber optic, yes, it's just a little bit right in there. Yep. I'm afraid to get too close to it because I don't know how stable it really is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to stay around and have fun, but like I said, I took her off early from work, so that means I've got to go in early tomorrow.
Christie, what's your phone number? Thank you.
I'm not home during the day. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have copies. If you want to keep them, you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, move on. Next item up is the consent agenda. These are all items that are pretty much routine in nature. I did want to pull away item G. This is the one that has to do with the approval of a pay application of $138,000, you know, $138,367.50, to be exact, to Moscow lighting for the new street lighting on South D, reconstruction project. Councilman Yates is an officer with the corporation and needs to abstain from that one, and so I suspect he might want to support everything else on the consent agenda. Your call, of course.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, item F?
Yeah, what are the hours going to be for the extended service?
Yeah, this is-
Will they involve music or?
Yep. To clarify for our audience, this is a request from Rock Island TAP at 206 Rock Island Avenue to extend the outdoor service area for an event on June 1st and 2nd. It doesn't say in the council-provided documents what the hours will be, if it's something that they're going to be open until midnight or if it's something that can be-
And will there be any outdoor music as the neighbors was out?
I'm not speaking for or against at the moment, but it's the same event they've had now for, even Duffy was there, they had it, yeah.
Okay.
It involves motorcycles.
So if that's the case, then yeah, that would include outdoor music.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah, I don't have any details. Do you have any?
I don't have the hours.
Yeah, memory is failing me as far as when things had to quiet down and that sort of thing, too.
Well, we had, we had some guidelines on there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so they're, you know, they're not here in the audience to support this, not to ask questions.
I'm not against it. I just want to know for the neighbors and the neighborhood, what time, the noise.
Well, maybe we could do this, that, how about if we put the caveat in there that it would be the same rules as last year?
As some passion, that's great. Good idea.
Okay.
And I do think that was a request.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that doesn't require a motion then, probably, since that's the understanding we're working with.
Okay.
Okay? Any other thoughts or questions on the consent agenda, items A through F?
Well, I had a question on the one you pulled for Doug. Is there something that I don't understand, or why do we have, part of it's in the consent and then we're paying the final in the regular?
So, Mayor and Council, what we've done is the pay applications have been placed on the consent agenda for projects that we're working on, and then if there's an acceptance, completion of the project, acceptance, we put that on the regular agenda so that we-
Because it's final payment, it's going to start warranty, it's going to start the retention, right?
Any ideas that then we discuss and show the pictures of either the before afters or the progress that was made on the project?
Okay. I think it was just because it was so close that made me think about it, but I'm fine with that.
So, do we have a motion supporting items A through F?
So, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Fallery?
Yes.
Joss?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item G is the approval of the pay application to Moscow Sports Lighting. Do we have a motion for support?
So moved.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yates?
I'm staying.
Burnett?
Yes.
Fallery?
Yes.
Joss?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes, and the street and the white slope, very.
Okay, that passes. Getting into the regular agenda, item A is a presentation from the Oskaloosa High School Project-Based Learning Class. The description that we have, the city manager's office was contacted by Oskaloosa High School teacher Autumn Reichseder in February to discuss a project-based learning opportunity her class was going to undertake. Autumn shared the idea that the students would like to evaluate the possibility of adding a splash pad to the community. Students would do all the necessary research, come up with the proposals, and then share their findings at a later date. On April 3rd, the students completed their work and shared the three concepts for community splash pads. And after the presentations, she, Mrs. Reichseder was asked if she would be interested in sharing the students' work with the mayor and city council, and she agreed. At that point, I'll give the floor to you.
I'm Autumn Reichseder. Yeah, I'm a high school special ed English lab. I do, are, every year we're asked to do a project-based learning, and this year I started out to do an all-inclusive playground, but then they changed the theme to water. So I was like, well, my kids love going to splash pads in the morning for the closest and reliable to the campus way. So I just did research and then made designs and came up with different ideas, working with Scott to present and hopefully get implemented into Oskaloosa.
Hello, my name is Scott Steppants. I'm actually a resident of Oskaloosa, and I come on 9th and 3rd Street. But in addition to that, I do work for a quality foremost company in manufacturing splash pad equipment for our world, Vortex Aquatic Structures. So Autumn asked me to help the kids develop their project, and so I work with them quite closely to develop their ideas and get those into a graphical format, as well as, you know, looking at budgets and other type of issues, site of appropriateness, where they are located, and what the solutions are for each one. So I'm here really to present the different options that are there for them. Obviously, a lot of them have tried to do it, and they've already waited, and so I'm happy to be here for that. But up on the screen, you can see, and I believe you already have some of the active information, we did three concepts. We identified three locations around the community as possible locations. Now, I want to preface that by saying that splash pads can be located pretty much anywhere and within a reasonable framework, and so exactly where they're located does not need to be the final location. Those can be worked out through the city and through the community efforts. But the ones that we had are Edmondson, which is the first one on the screen, and what we looked at doing there is by the playground that's existing over by the west side, west entrance, you know, we looked at how could that be integrated in there. I know there's conversation of possibly having that replaced at some point, so since there would be a lot of disruption services could actually benefit very well together. Typically, a splash pad will be partnered with or shared with a dry playground as well because of the shared usage. The reason it's, the size that it is and the space is mostly because of the location, being that it's Edmondson, it's a large destination park, there's going to be a lot of attractions. We have the pool nearby and other things. It's going to have a larger capacity. A lot more people are going to go to that park. So this class, when they looked at it, they decided to elaborate on that design a little bit larger, to make it larger to fit the parameter of what's there in the park. The next is, there's a few images there to support it. Some of the features that the children really liked were specifically the large kite water features. They really liked that. Our floral line, which are the large, I call them beach ball looking pieces towards the right in the front, and then we also have some of our new water, water journeys lines. They emulate stones, they're in the foreground there, and those are really ideal for young children. One of the things that we talked about with the students is that when we are designing this, we want to make sure that it's as encompassing as possible for all different types of age groups, families, grandparents and children, finding together brothers and sisters. So there's going to be a diversity of age groups, so we want to make sure of attractions that appeal to those different age groups. So we have some for older children and younger children. So that's typically how a splash pad would ideally be designed. All of these splash pads, this one as well as the other, we'll see one of them, this one and the next one, are designed to have a recirculating system. So there'll actually be a water containment vessel, there'll be pumps, there'll be chemicals to keep the water clean, filters to keep the water clean, UV, those type of things to maintain the water quality. Since this is such a large splash pad, something like it can run around, I think it was 450 pounds a minute roughly, that's not water, it just goes waste. We want to capture that, reuse it, repurpose it. So that's something that is designed into that feature. Again, just some different images of what they look like. Yeah, the one mentioned is the bucket. There's a large dumping bucket on there. It's an iconic attraction. A lot of kids love that, a lot of families love that. You know, it gets a large volume of water pumping out of it. It draws people to that area, so for iconic, it's really, and we did put City Oskaloosa logo on there. That was a good one.
And so, these are still pictures, but that was a question that had entered my mind. Is this something that fills up and then falls over to push that large volume and?
Yeah, so there's a blue pipe at the top is the fill, and there's a counterweight in the bucket, so once it reaches a certain volume, it'll tip over, and then you can see the yellow is representative of the shed roof. It's actually a clear acrylic-like material, polycarbene-like material that the water hits and then sheds off, and actually has a slight upturn to it, so it throws the water up a little bit to get a little more of his ass, plus it stops it from actually dumping straight on there. So if all of you remember the water challenge or, you know, the ice bucket challenge, it's not pleasant to sit under it. So we have water dispersed. And we can time that so that we can have it run for, you know, every three minutes, every five minutes, every two minutes, we can, just by affecting the value of pumped water being entered.
That's pretty cool.
This plan shows you identify all the individual features, as well as their corresponding water flows and dynamic information. The flooring is just a suggested, you know, it's supposed to be something they wanted to show, for example, it can be plain concrete, it can have a synthetic surface to it, so there's a lot of different options available, depending on what the city would like to do. We looked at being that it was closely located towards the existing restrooms, too. The mechanical spaces ideally would be located just off of that building, which is sort of add-on to it, since utilities and everything are right there to save a lot of cost. We provided a budgetary information to the students, so what this document shows is the equipment, so all the features and all the mechanical systems, the filters, the pumps, everything that is, we produce is in this value with the, sorry, the freight and packaging and everything there. So that's what it would be, get all the equipment to the site, make it manufactured to the site, and then you would have to add in the installation cost. One of the features that Vortex has included in terms of our design is all of these can be staged. So we have a system called Say Swap, so all of the vertical features that they're mounted into the concrete that have an anchoring system and everything like that, we can design this now so that in the meantime, maybe half of those or something were just ground sprays, but then as more funds became available, they could add to that. So for facilities or cities or anybody that's, you know, trying to be budget-conscious, it gives them a lot of opportunity to realize a full design, but not necessarily paper all right. So it's a nice advantage, so the students like that.
Quick question, so that cost is without installation?
That's true.
Typically, do you all do installation, or do the cities do it, or how's that done?
Vortex doesn't. We have a network of installers, certified installers, and channel partners, and there's actually a company outside of Madison, Wisconsin called CRS, and they can do the install and stuff like that. And I actually have sort of jumped in a little bit and asked them to price the different figures and stuff like that, and we can make that presentable if that's what it is. But typically, the city would generally put that up and bid, and then depending on the parameters of what the city requirements are for that, they would solicit, maybe store those, and then they'd be installed. So typically, you'll see the equipment provided separately, a lot of the things, like purchase that direct to a purchasing program, national purchasing program, get familiar with that, or some other methods, and so it saves a lot of cost from that.
So part of installation would be pouring the concrete to the base as well?
Yes, you, the site work, so the excavation, the piping, the installation of the filtration equipment, pouring the concrete, the anchors, and then the erection. Now, we do have some costs in there for startup, because we typically like to do is send somebody from our company out, make sure it's all set up properly. One of the benefits for our filtration systems is we build it all in-house, we test it all in-house, make sure it's ready to go, then we disassemble it, ship it out to site, and it's more of a plug-and-play type of scenario. So it takes a lot of that effort out, but you know, you have the controller, you want to make sure everything's balanced properly, so we have experts who handle that portion. The next design, we called it the OES Splash Pad because we were looking at somewhere near the elementary school. We just selected the site that's immediately east of the school, it's like the old volleyball park.
Yeah, there used to be a little park there by the bathrooms and the shed, Van Derwil Park there, and it's called the City Park on, we're not sure what it was called.
So it's not on the rolls, it's part of the park, there's Vanderbilt Park just south of that.
Yep.
So we could ship over there if that was the case. But it's nice because it is near there, it is near the Lacy complex. We did talk about that as an opportunity to maybe sharing it with the Lacy complex or the new community center, too. But this design, we, they said since it was by a school, they wanted it to be an Oskaloosa High School, by her high school, which is the symbolism, so they had the large oak representative of Toski, and then the bucket, we put the Indian head logo on there, so we had that as well. And then again, there was just a selection of different types of features. It's a much smaller splash pad, it's probably about half the size overall, so it's a little bit of a smaller park, but not having as much. But again, these can develop, you know, they take the best parts of all the different ideas and from the others that kind of design, it's very, well, maybe that.
What's the activation?
So the, yeah, the operation typically of the splash pad is that the city will set it for hours of operation. So during the summer, it can be operating from 10:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. if they wanted to. And then the computer controller will actually shut everything off so that, we have an activator, so kids will come up and touch it, the water will flow for a period of time, then shut off. If the system shuts down after those hours of operation, it won't do anything. And the activators, typically what'll happen, like I said, is it's sequence, so they'll touch it, it'll turn on, different features will come on and off at whatever program that we decide, and then it'll shut off after like maybe a four or five-minute period, and then they have to go back and start it again. And that way, it's not giving a false perception that pouring water all over the place, plus nobody's there, it shouldn't be used. Another thing that we typically include in all of these is what's called a rain diver system. So the rain draining that's on the splash pad, what happens is during operation, the waters funnel back to the holding tank where it's treated and circulated. But if a rain event happens, once the timer sets off, there's a valve that'll switch, and it'll actually take any water that then, like a rain event, can actually put into storm. So that way, we're not disrupting the balance of the water in the holding tank, and so I'm making sure that we're not wasting a lot of chemicals or water from that. So again, another luxury price for the equipment and features that's associated with that. And then the last design, one of the classes wanted to do something out of the city square, and obviously, I have a sort of preservation commission, so I'm like, well, that's an interesting concept. But we carried through with it so they could see what the options are. Now, what you see on the plan is really interesting, so we superimposed the splash pad on the park, so it wouldn't really have much of a disruption to the area, but it would change it slightly. But I had another conversation one time, what if this mall first was closed off, we could, pedestrian mall type of situation, that would be a really good location, I think we should do that way. The design, however, was such that it's all ground-based. There's no vertical features, it's all just ground features, so that it's very, when it's not operating, you wouldn't really even notice it except that it knows the miles. The other aspect of this is it is a fountain that we can tie it with lights and music, which would really tie well into the whole theme and identity of Oskaloosa is. So we can actually have this running at night and have a visual display, very much like what's seen in urban environment, the city of some sort. I actually had ideas at one time in my head of like, if we had a ring, I'm around the bandstand, so when the band's playing, Thursday nights and the water's flowing to the music, I thought that'd be fantastic, but. So the kids really had a lot of fun with this one. Being that it is the city square and we want it to be unobtrusive as possible, we really reduced it in size and scale, just so it'd be more architectural and feel, though it's still, those had the same amount of fun. The difference on this one is that it's such a low flow, I mean, very low line of water, typically something like this would be a flow-through, so which case is we wouldn't capture the water and treat it, because it's not a lot of water being wasted, because you're like, you're paying a lot more for the equipment and filter than you would for the cost of water. Again, that design can always be adapted and changed to whatever the city would like to do. Other things we've done with those, if we don't like to see that water, just go to waste eater, so we developed systems where it's a recapture and repurpose. So if you have water, it could go to a holding tank that's used for subsurface irrigation or some other purpose like that. So we have done those type of systems in the past as well. Now, it may be used to water the grass and supplement the irrigation for the park itself. And again, being that it is the smaller of the three projects, it definitely has the lower cost of costs associated with it. lower cost associated with it. So at that point, again, we have different ideas on this. It's a fantastic sound bad talk, fun with that, I think. But if there's any questions you have with me, I'm definitely willing to take that or maybe evolve if you have any questions in the class.
Questions that come to my mind, you mentioned a recirculating, recycling of water for the first two, but that's water that's being thrown up in the air, there's probably some evaporation. Is there a consumption amount that we could expect?
Yeah, it's not that great. You will, it's obviously environmental in nature, so if we have a very hot, dry summer, you're going to lose more from evaporation and expiration from that aspect, but since the majority of the volume of water is in a tank in the ground that's treated and circulated, it's not evaporating. So it's not like it's open body water, it's just a little bit of aerosolization, you're actually going to get more carryout of people with water on their clothes. So a child will run through a fur coat, you know, carry out maybe the amount of water quick, and then they'll drip it off a car. But it's not a lot. Typically, any of these systems will only have like a one-inch line that goes into the tank, and the system tells it it's got a float valve in there, and recognizes when the water level drops. Depending on what's happening in there, the volume of water will change. I've actually included in the documents a couple Excel spreadsheets that we share with our clients that give them the ability to start to input the different numbers, and we can help with that again, say if we had a recirculating system, how much water's going to be used, how much is that going to cost, what's the most likelihood of how much water's going to be wasted. But it also depends on how busy it is. So obviously, on the weekends, you're going to have a lot more children out there, the water's going to be starting going a lot faster and a lot more often, whereas if it's in mobile, maybe not as much.
Do you find that these compete with swimming pools?
They don't compete, they supplement. They have their different needs, so...
No lifeguard.
No lifeguards. The benefit to that is there are no requirements for a lifeguard, you don't have any standing water. And that provides a lot of comfort and reassurance to families with young children who might not be able to swim. It also helps to bring in more people that have different types of abilities or different age groups that are not as comfortable getting into the pools. So we actually see these a lot either within a pool complex, that they maybe are on the outside somewhere, like a playground at the pool, and moms feel comfortable, or they're outside of a pool, or they're nearby, just because it's a nice complimentary feature. And so you get different age groups growing, going with those different groups. So I wouldn't say it competes, and again, it's just a supplemental type of element, but we do have smaller communities that like to use those in lieu of a pool because of operational costs associated with the pool. Lifeguards being one of them, obviously, and the people that like those. But many times, we see a lot of our features in the pools as well.
Makes sense.
I was just going to tell Autumn and Scott how impressed I was with what the students did, as well as you, and I hope you take that back, because they're still in school, and tell them they did a really outstanding job of their PPL, in my opinion.
All the data that we have, it looks like, do you have annual maintenance costs on the three proposal?
Those were just generic, I'm not sure, Mike, if you didn't put anything in there. No, what we would typically do is we would just, at some point, have a conversation, sit down and make sure all the labor costs that are in there, make sure the water raised the active number in there, and then we would work with you to develop it, because we do so many of these all over the world, they're all, numbers are all over, too, so it's not always set that way, but it's very easy to probably can drop that in and be able to develop relations.
Well, please pass on that the mayor and council were very impressed with the work that was done, and so let everyone know that we are very pleased with what we've seen. And thank you very much for doing such an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we ought to fill in the outside pool and build one.
What'd you say?
We'd save the leak, we'd save the repair, and originally, we were talking about getting rid of that pool, now somehow, we're thinking about keeping that pool.
It's good to have ideas.
Yep.
Mayor, council, we talked about the design of the recreation facility, the early child education center, and that. Part of the discussion is the potential of including a splash pad feature like this. So being careful not to create competition or maybe even supplementing what we're already doing there is important. I think there were some ideas that you could have them in multiple locations, and again, they're not necessarily competing, it's just gives the community a flavor of what we can offer, and then hope that they would use the larger recreation facility on a more often basis.
Well, maybe I misread that meeting, but I thought it was kind of, I didn't think it was very popular to do it. I mean, I thought it was a good idea, but at the rec center.
I didn't take it that way.
Did I misread that?
No.
Somebody wasn't interested in it. One of them, I don't know.
I thought the idea was brought up, I just didn't know that we'd got to the point of deciding what all went in yet.
We'll get at the options now.
Moving on, item B. This is a public hearing. Consider the resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the facade improvement project phase two. Courtesy Architecture and Design has prepared plans and specs for the Osceola facade improvement project. The project includes facade improvements for six properties in the downtown Osceola. Preliminary architectural opinion of probable cost was $674,406. There's a lot here. The project has received approval from the Iowa Economic Development Authority for compliance with state historic preservation standards, and it has also received a certificate of appropriateness from the Osceola Historic Preservation Commission. If the project's awarded, construction is expected to begin in June, depending on the weather, with completion expected at the end of calendar 2019. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, if you receive any comments, and so is there anyone here who would like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close it, close the hearing. There is an update on the bids, that construction bids were received and publicly opened on Wednesday, May 8th. There's only one bid received that was 20% higher than the architect's estimate, and so the project team is reviewing the bid details and discussing options to close the funding gap, with the idea of keeping the property owner's share at 25%. Consideration of these items will occur at a later meeting. So do we have support for the resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost?
Second.
Any discussion?
I was just curious, how did we get the bids and we're just approving the plans? Is it just the concept, I guess?
So at the last meeting, which was a month ago, you gave the council a preliminary approval of the plans, and then directed us to go off the bids with the projects that were required in the whole public hearing, and you had notice for that.
So now we're going to approve it twice.
Yeah, this is your final approval of the plans. Yeah.
If I approve it, I'm not saying I'm willing to pay the extra, right?
Yep, yep. So the notion is one of, we offer a preliminary idea, but then after the bids come in, the reason for the hearing is what if someone brings in a piece of wisdom that, hey, you're making a mistake here, or you should do something different, it's an opportunity to get that fixed yet before we start finalizing things. Okay, we've got a motion, we've got the second. Any further discussion?
And Mayor, Council, we did make it out here off the bids, and so the architect's bid asked to go back and talk to the contractor, see if there are ways of value engineering some of the design, and checking their subcontractor bids as well, to see if the quality's correct, where they think they should be, see if we can drive those down a little bit. The last facade phase, we asked the dealer trust for funding to help keep the property owner's hole, I don't know if that was on the table this time, but we could reach out to them again. There could be just an additional request. We already expect to ask the state for additional grant funds that are available, and then we would come to you and let you know where we've been it up. And there may be a need for the city to contribute further for this project to happen, or there have been other places that will place the additional increased cost on the property owners themselves, so that's an option as well.
I'm curious, I've forgotten, how much does the block grant cover of this?
You're providing $450,000. Correct. And we're eligible for an additional $50,000.
Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Farnett?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
That passes. Okay, item C is to consider resolution levying a special assessment against private property for snow removal in accordance with Section 12.12 of the city code. There are five properties here with total fees of $1,300, and so I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak to this tonight? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. There were certified notices sent to each property owner, notice was published in the Oskey Herald. If approved, the property owner has 30 days from the time of filing with the Mahaska County Treasurer to pay for the snow removal, and then after 30 days, it will be assessed to property taxes with a payment schedule of 9% interest. Do we have a motion of support for this?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Frazier?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Farnett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D is to consider a request for a parking restriction on Fourth Avenue West, requiring an ordinance amendment to Osceola Municipal Code, Chapter 10.48. This is the second reading. The property owner of A15 Fourth Avenue West, Jeffrey Shelton, has requested the parking restriction in the 800 block on Fourth Avenue West. He complained that he's got, had difficulty exiting from his driveway when there are parked vehicles on the roadway, and he also indicated the garbage and delivery drivers are unable to turn around at his driveway and are forced to back up on A Avenue West towards South H Street. As a result, the staff studied Fourth Avenue West from South H to the dead end to have an overall view of on-street parking requirements in the area. The study corridor is a local residential street with low traffic volumes. Survey was sent out to all property owners who have properties contiguous to the study area. Of the three property owners who responded to the survey, two of them did not want any parking restriction, one of them did want a parking restriction along the south side from 818 Fourth Avenue West to the dead end. So as part of the study, staff also researched the crash history for the last five years, found no accidents in the subject corridor. The pavement width on Fourth Avenue West does narrow from 30 feet near the intersection of South H and Fourth Avenue West down to 22 feet near the dead end. Although there is low traffic volume and no reported crashes, a parking restrictions that is just at the dead end, that's approximately 30 feet long, may help with this request because the road narrows at the dead end. The dead end section of the roadway also doesn't have a cul-de-sac or hammerhead to allow for vehicles to turn around. And so staff is recommending that we approve the second reading of this ordinance authorizing the parking restriction at the dead end of the subject corridor. Do you have a motion to support that?
So move.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dross?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Farnett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. And there it is. Okay, moving on. Item E is to consider a resolution accepting the completion of the new streetlights for the D Street reconstruction project that was done by Moscow Sports Lighting, LLC, and this approves the retainage amount of $7,282.50. So in our explanation, on May 7, the streetlights for the D Street reconstruction project were completed by Moscow Sports Lighting. The street lighting project was completed during the same construction timeframe as the ongoing pavement reconstruction project, but was bid separately in order to prevent delays from the Iowa DOT bidding process. Staff's inspected this project and is recommending to accept the project as completed. The scope of the project includes all the work associated with the construction of 11 new street poles on D Avenue, excuse me, D Street between A Avenue West and the East West Alley that's south of Second Avenue West. Final contract amount of the project was $145,650, and that was after a net decrease of $13,350, namely 8.4%, from the original contract amount, which was $159,000 and awarded on the May 7, 2018 city council meeting. The total cost of the project in the amount of $145,650 included a 5% retainage in the amount of $7,282.50. With city council approval, this project will be accepted as complete. Approval of the completion of the project activates the warranties for the project and authorizes the release of the retainage in the amount of $7,282.50, 30 days after the project is accepted, if no claims are filed against the project. Total cost breakdown is listed here in the agenda. Do we have a motion supporting the acceptance of this project?
So move. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm just impressed that they found a day that they could take a picture when the sun shines.
Isn't that beautiful?
impressed by that. Slides look great, it looks even better when there's pretty blue sky like that.
They work.
We believe they work, yes.
You gotta put a corner in.
He's abstaining.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Addison?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Abstaining due to my role with Moscow.
Farnett?
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
That passes. Gets us to the end of the regular agenda, reports from city staff, city manager, anything?
I don't have any.
Okay. City clerk, anything?
No, thank you.
City attorney, anything?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the council members, how about if we start down with Bob Dross?
Congratulations to the class in 2019 in Oskey, graduation yesterday, quite a class, a little partial to that as it was canceled, Yates.
And our city clerk.
And the city clerk, yeah, absolutely. So congratulations on that squad, with all they've got going on.
Yep.
I have nothing.
Dan?
No, thank you.
I want to repeat that same thing, great class.
It's going to make the rest of them feel like you didn't appreciate them too much.
I do, but every year, I think, and they get better, it seems like every year, they get a little better, which really makes me proud.
Tom?
Well, I can say third, but you did a good job, Bob started, to the kids. On Carmichael Road, and Mike, we already talked about the reflectors, but we're still having stormwater issues in the big rains, but yes, if we could get, I think all we need is a couple of tile jetted or something. So I don't have to hear about, we don't have storm sewers, but we don't have city sewer either, but we couldn't get the storm, you know. Water clear across the road, okay, thank you. And on Christie Bridges' point, I assume we're going to follow up on that, you know, I think the sinkhole does concern me both with the little kids, but I'm not sure, Achilles probably knows what's going on on North 11th, but, you know, there are a lot of sinkholes here lately, you know, we're building on a coal mine, and there's three yards that have sunk out of sight, they've been working there for weeks now, filling those to back up, pump of concrete in them and all that, so sinkholes are an issue, so if it's, you know, if it's just poured drainage tile and it's eroded away, it shouldn't be a big deal, but if there is something under there, we ought to try to figure that out.
And Tom, if I could jump in on that. I am president of the Board of Health, and at our last meeting, Eric Derschke was talking about, you know, they had some sinkholes develop along North 11th, the, trying to think, funding's coming from the county or the state and any of those, state, might correct me, those have been filled in, my understanding is those have been addressed, but typically, it's something like that, where you have sinkholes per se coming from old mines, there are some state programs that come in to address that.
That's why I'm saying we should look into it, yeah, and those have been major, and we just make sure this isn't going to be major, and hopefully, it's a small thing and we can fix it. She has been here before about that, but it's been, I guess she kind of called recently, but I'm pretty sure it's been three or four years.
Three days to me on the same.
Yeah, it hasn't. I think Public Works was under a different person.
Steve, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. And I've got nothing new as well. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.